We can call the meeting to order at 5:32.
Oh, God, is this.
Can I have approval of the agenda?
I'd like to make an amendment.
Sure, okay.
I'd like to pull item 8C.
8C, okay. Pull that. Okay, I have a second to the agenda, pulling 8C.
I'll make a motion. I move we approve the amended agenda.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. We will convene to close session. Six thirty to read. We will reconvene from closed session. For A, report of action taken in closed session. No action was taken. For B, we will do the flag salute. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your people, for which it stands, my nation, your God, and the principle of the religion and justice of God.
I guess I should've said, please stand, put your hand over your heart, like our students do, and ready, begin, so. Five A, employment, approval of employment agreement with a district superintendent. So it's with great disappointment that I am going to announce that we did not reach agreement with our candidate due to personal reasons. So we do not have a superintendent and we will reconvene a search with the Costa Group in the short, near future. So we'll go on to six public comments. I see none. So we'll go on to seven communications, so no communications report from the teachers or yes or no?
No.
Nope? Okay. You told me that. I just saw the candidate type thing. No official correspondence. So the consent agenda, we pulled 8C. So I will move for motion to approve A, B, D, E, F, G, H, and I, J for approval. So can I have a motion for those consent items?
Make a motion that we approve A through J excluding the ratification of commercial warrant registers.
Okay. Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. So we'll do 8C. Jennifer, you ask for the.
I did. So on 8C, I just wanted, in March, I think it was, we had a Brown Act training. We had a Brown Act training in March, and I wanted to go over what the attorney had discussed, how we were supposed to handle Tim's payout. My understanding was that it should be a separate item and not buried in the warrant register.
I have a question.
Is that how I remember?
Is it a payout or reimbursement?
It is a reimbursement, but the way that it's written is, and the way that the attorney said, as I remember, is it needs to be separate and he has to not be in the room when the vote's taken.
So I don't remember it that way, so I would like to possibly go back to that attorney and, unless other people do that, and then get a written statement as to how we're supposed to properly handle that.
Okay.
Everybody good with that? So I will institute that, to go back to that attorney, to get clarification exactly how we're supposed to handle that. Okay. So, and I know, Tim, you have to reclusive yourself from the item on that, so may I have a motion then to approve the commercial warrant register?
I'll make a motion to approve the commercial warrant register.
And I recuse myself from item 1717626.
Okay. Have a second on that? I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. All right. So we will go on to, there's nothing on nine for educational services. We'll go to personnel services, ratification of personnel action report, 181911A, certificated. Any questions on that?
I have a question. We received a revised either 10, A, B, or C. I don't recall which one. Does someone know what changed?
Yes. Tony.
Oh, that was added?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The, what was revised was adding Tony's resignation as the end of his contract on the 6th thirtieth, 19.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, may I have a motion to accept the ratification of personal action report, 181911A?
So moved.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. 10B, ratification of personal action report, 181911B, classified? Any questions? If not, may I have a motion to accept the ratification of personal action report, 181911B, classified?
So moved.
Sir.
Okay. Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. 10C, page 26, we do this every year, that the board approve the declaration of need for fully qualified educators. So any questions on this? So this is probably, is Karen here? No. Oh. Can you give us just, for Joe's purpose and, I don't know if we've done this for Chris before, just kind of a summary as to why we do this? I appreciate that. Thank you.
In brief, we're supposed to be hiring highly qualified teachers, and sometimes we cannot find highly qualified teachers, so we have interns that come in, and so we just are saying that we are still looking for highly, sorry, nervous, qualified people, and that's our intent. You know, it's just saying that's our intent, but if we need to, this is who we are hiring. So the numbers kind of correspond. They might be a little bit off with how many interns we have.
So an intern is someone that doesn't have their fully certificated.
That's correct.
Status. Right.
That's right.
Okay.
They're still in a program.
Right.
They haven't received a preliminary.
Right.
Credential yet.
And we have to exhaust all certificated before we can hire an intern, correct?
Excuse me?
If, when we, when we post for a position, you have to, if someone applies and they're certificated.
Mm-hmm.
And you have to hire them versus you hiring an intern, correct?
Well, we'll hire the best candidate.
Okay.
Sometimes the highly qualified teacher that comes in isn't the best.
Okay.
So, but we do make every attempt to find experienced credential teachers, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Have a motion then to.
I move that we approve the declaration of need for fully qualified educators.
Okay. Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. 11A, business and operations services, approval of price increases in food services for 2019-2020. Questions?
So our food service program has different revenue sources, including our federal, state reimbursements, contracts for meals that we have with some of the neighboring districts, and primarily our sales at our local schools is a big driver of that. We have not increased our prices since 2015-16, so we're proposing to the board an increase of 25 cents per meal, and we've done a comparison of some neighboring districts to kind of show you that our price is in line with those districts. So it'll provide additional funds for the food service program, and we feel it's time to make that minimal increase.
Thank you. Questions? If not, may I have a motion to approve the price increases for food services for 2019-2020?
So moved.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. 11B, public hearing and resolution to convey a public easement, utility easement to PG&E. So do I need to?
Public hearing.
Open the public hearing? Yeah. I was trying to get to my page here. Coming back and forth. So I open the public hearing on that. Seeing anybody that wants to give input, seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. So I can see the PG&E representatives are here again. Thank you. Are there, we went over this pretty much in detail last time, but are there other, well, Tim wasn't here last time for that discussion, so are there questions in regards to that? Or do you, Tim, do you need a summary of what, of what that is?
No, I've reviewed all that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So seeing no questions, may I have, this is a resolution, so I may have a motion to accept the resolution?
I move that we adopt resolution 1819-23.
Okay. Can I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Roll call?
Jesse Brown?
Yes?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes four to one with a majority, so we'll go forward on that. 11C, roof rehabilitation at Montevista Elementary School, page two.
Is Josh here?
Yes.
Tim, I was gonna take that item.
Okay.
Thanks. So I think Julie and I are prepared to handle any of the items, and then if we need to call upon the staff, we will move this up. So this here is an agenda item to award the contract to Johnston Roofing. We put out the bids, advertised them, according to law. It's for a roof rehab project at Montevista Elementary School. The bids basically came in and were recommending here. Johnston Roof was the only company that submitted the bid. It is in line with the anticipated cost of the project, and the cost of $150,909 will be paid from the 2016 bond authorization, and this was part of the deferred maintenance budget that was set aside for deferred maintenance.
How much is that deferred maintenance budget?
I believe we had set aside $200,000.
And how much of that have we already spent?
I'm not sure that we've spent any. If we have, it's been very little, so we're still in line with that amount.
So my question is, what I've asked the last couple times, is we need to have some sort of a meeting because we obviously aren't going to be able to do everything that was discussed in the past in regards to deferred maintenance issues or any other issues, and we also have the very expensive issue of replacing IT equipment. We already have 650 Chromebooks at $227,000, and so we need to take a look at the whole facilities picture of what we have left of bond money and how we're going to spend it wisely. I would hate to use it to all these projects and have nothing for IT, which is where we're going to end up if we're not careful.
Yeah, and I agree with you. That was part of the presentation that we gave, and we did outline what we felt we were in line with budget-wise. We do, in my mind, the more pressing issue is more of a cash issue, but I think we're going to be in good shape with that. We have more developer fee funds that came in and anticipated, so that's going to help us, but we definitely could sit down and work it all out and get everybody on.
Yeah, what I don't, I just don't want to be in the position to be spending money we don't have yet.
Right. So, yeah, we're down to cash, and we won't, we can't do that, and we won't do that.
Okay.
Okay. Robert, I have a question. Where is that company based?
I'm not entirely sure. Let's see.
Pardon me?
I didn't hear the question.
Sure. Where is the company based? Are they local or are they?
Do you know, Josh?
I'm on the tip of my tongue. I'm trying to.
Oh.
While you're looking that up, because one of the things I want to raise is that, you know, the cost of living in Sonoma County is so high, and we've all seen the articles about how hard it is to attract teachers. In terms of contracts with construction companies and other firms, I think we need to, and I know we'll probably get into this later with our goals meeting, but we need to start thinking about project labor agreements and making sure that local companies are used where feasible and possible, and make sure that those dollars stay in our community and that we hire local as, for any contract that the district puts out, especially these large construction company contracts.
I think part of the problem is we only have one bid, you know, here too, from them. And a question I have, and I know I support local contractors too, because the money turns around in the community, are they, what roof is this? Are we covering all the buildings or just a few of the buildings or, come on up, Josh.
I don't think.
So I'm pretty sure it's, whoa, sorry.
It's really loud.
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure they're from Martinez. Either, either their office is at Martinez. I believe they're from Martinez is where they're.
So Josh, that was the only bid we received?
Yes.
Why is it that we don't, because there are a lot of roofing companies in Sonoma County, and why is it that we don't receive bids from other companies?
It just all depends on how much work the roofing contractors have.
I think, I could say, since I work in the industry, everyone is super slammed.
Yeah.
Even my dentist called me to see if I can hang a TV in there, because they've been trying for about two months to get someone just to hang a TV in their office. So I think as far as construction goes, everyone is like totally slammed on our job site, which is a huge three, four hundred person job site. They don't have enough manpower to stay on track, so I think that's just what it comes down to is, you know, there's so much work out there that people can't man everything.
And when we were talking to Jack Butcorn, he said the non-union companies are busier than, or the other way around, I guess, but anyway, everybody's busy.
Everyone's really busy.
So this is a not a union firm, I'm assuming?
Johnston Roofing is a union firm.
They are?
Yes.
Okay.
So which buildings are we doing?
It's rooms three through 15.
Okay, three through 15.
It's about approximately 12,000 square feet.
Okay.
So what we're doing is rehabilitation, so we're not doing the full roofing. There is a sub that's doing a little bit of roofing, probably like $16,000, $20,000, but what we're doing is recoding the roof so that we can get another 15 to 20-year warranty on the roofs.
Roughly $10 a square foot doesn't sound unreasonable.
It's about, yeah, once you break it out, because there's a 10% contingency in there as well, so it's about, it's about $7.03, $7.10 per square foot.
So is that all the rooms then, three through 15?
All rooms three through 15, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But not all rooms on campus.
No, no, no.
How many rooms are not being done?
About 16, 17 rooms, I believe. There's about 33 classrooms.
And what's left on those? Life expectancy?
We're doing, a lot of the, mostly we're doing the portables. The rest of the roofs are the metal roofs.
Okay.
So those are like, we still have about 15, 20 years on those.
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, Josh.
Can I have a motion then, if there are no other questions, on 11C to approve that?
I move that we award the contract to Johnston Roofing, Inc. in the amount of $117,909 to be paid out of the 2016 bond fund.
Have a second on that, please?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries four to one. 12A, fiscal update and planning, so.
Okay. Well, I'll take that one. The first item is on the 2018-19 budget, and part of what we'll be doing, and we started this, and in the future, we'll be doing the comparison of the current combined general fund. That's comparing the budget to current month, in this case, the end of, end of the last month, May, and comparing that to April. And we can see the changes on that by major category, and we can see what the fund balance and reserve levels are based on those changes. Any changes that you see there would be reflective in the budget transfers that the board approved earlier. So you can kind of cross-reference those if you need to.
Is Julie trying to get it up on the screen?
I've got no internet connection, so I apologize.
Page 44, if that helps.
Oh, she's going that way.
I'm trying again. I apologize. It's kicking me off.
Do we need to bring it up?
Oh, no internet. Yay.
It was working.
Well, that's right. We were, we were told that, just FYI, this meeting will not be, I should've said this earlier, will not be live because our source to do that throughout all of the United States is down. We use.
YouTube.
YouTube?
Yeah, YouTube. Thank you. YouTube. In addition, you're looking to, you know, YouTube things, that's a vehicle, and it's down, so we are unable to do that. So on this sheet, is there anything, Robert, that we need to look at that's significant?
No. Basically, there was one trans, one change in the state revenues, and that was really a timing difference, and it had to do with the fiscal recovery plan and the, one of the block grants that we had. So it was really a timing difference. That will, that will clear itself out in.
So $200,000 down this month, $200,000 up next month, is that?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. So it's just a.
Or it might happen in April and May, so it's a timing difference.
Okay. So it's not a loss of $200,000 of income?
It's not. It's on a restricted side of the budget, so that has a different impact. You can see it does not affect the actual reserve level, the percentage on the bottom, because your available reserves and your reserve economic uncertainties must be from the unrestricted side.
Okay.
Those numbers didn't change. If we can move down to item five there, facilities update, technology, high school. Asphalt is complete in the school, in the student parking lot. Rebar is being tied right now, and concrete will be poured under the cover walkways in the next couple of days. Window frames and windows will also start going in in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
So the project's continuing to move forward. Lawrence Jones Middle School Performing Arts Building, that's the other project we have going on at this time. Stucco will be finished by the end of the week. Scaffolding will come down by the beginning of next week, and the site work will begin. Concrete will be poured by the end of the month. Sheet rock will be done by the end of the week, and the ceiling will then be painted, and the ceiling panels will be installed. At the end of the month, the modular practice rooms will be installed, so that project two is continuing to move forward.
Do we have any update on increment three?
We're still waiting. I believe we're in, still anticipating mid, or late, late June now? Yeah, late June, early July.
Wow.
Hold your breath.
What's, what's, what's like changed from the last time that we, because I think wasn't all about pricing in there?
What's changed with why it's not approved yet?
Well, why, yeah.
It's DSA. We submitted, and they're.
So we're just waiting on.
We're just waiting for them. It has to go through all the checkers. From what I've been told, it's sitting on a supervisor's desk right now, waiting for their approval.
Did they ask for some corrections or some?
We haven't got that yet.
We don't know.
So once we, so we're hoping in the next week or two that we'll get those corrections, their comments, and then we have a couple of weeks to.
Now, have you guys staged for the lighting, just ready to go?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, we're doing everything we can ahead of time. That, that won't affect, that doesn't fall under DSA.
Okay.
Yeah, once we're ready, we'll have to, once we get the approved plans, then we'll need to have a facilities meeting, and then it's sounding like we're going to need to call a special meeting in July to get it approved.
Yeah, and so if I could work with you, I guess, at this point, to maybe come up with some agenda stuff to talk about, because I think we also need to look at the overall picture, because we've got other things on that list you presented with us, that slideshow about needs that were coming, and 1920 is coming fast.
Yeah, absolutely.
And there's like 1.75 million on there for some replacement stuff. I know the switches are going to start having issues, and those are expensive, so if we could take a look at, I don't expect you to drop an IT plan in the next, you know, day, but I think we have to come up with some plan that says, this is what we have, this is what we're going to expect, the life expectancy and what we're going to need and when, because if we build that into LCAP, that's going to take away from other financial obligations or things we might want to do, so.
Well, a part of our, we know the bond is eventually going to go away, and so part of that idea was to build it in under the supplemental dollars, and we know those monies are targeted, and we need to be able, it's, it's a challenge to come up with a list to spend all those dollars.
Right.
So that still may be a good option. We can talk about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Item seven, we have the enrollment report, so we're, the new format that we're doing, unless there's any changes that the board would like, we're doing the current month enrollment, and we've listed in there what the differences are by elementary, middle, and high school, and then the overall change in comparison to the prior month. So from April to May, we went down another 16 students, so, excuse me.
So the number in August we want to exceed is 5733, hopefully?
Yeah, ultimately, I think we need to, the number we really should be targeting is in the average in March, April, right around in there, because that's our funding, funding enrollment.
Okay. So what number, help, help me out. Do we know that number now?
What we're looking at is about 5766, I believe, is what we're looking at.
So the magic number we want to compare against when we start is that 5766?
Yeah. So what we're doing, when we get into the budget item, we'll talk a little bit about our enrollment.
Okay.
As you know, we've been projecting flat, and that number's been a stagnant number, so we're not adjusting that as we're moving through the months of enrollment.
Okay.
But we want to be able to exceed that in order to get additional funds.
Okay. Great.
So the red flag will go up somewhere if we fall below the average flag number that we're using?
Yeah, so when, when we know, we will start doing the 10-day count once school starts, and I'll explain right now, there's a distinction in our 10-day count between what our actual enrollment is, because what we're actually counting is students that are showing up, not necessarily our enrollment count. So at the end of the first month, we'll actually do that picture of what our enrollment is. We'll know that all along, and we'll let the board know as soon as we get something we feel pretty confident in, and that won't be in November.
Okay. So no, so you're saying the end of first month, so the end of August?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So, Robert?
Yes, ma'am.
So in terms of the drop, did you say 16 students?
Yes.
So is that a reflection of the failure of the marketing campaign in the spring? So is that a reflection of the failure of the marketing campaign in the spring?
Well, absolutely not. That's just at the end of the year is what we're talking about. That's the change from one month to the next.
Okay.
So there's variety of reasons, and it's all over the, all grade levels experience some sort of drop.
So the marketing campaign, was there an evaluation of that in terms of its effectiveness?
Uh, I think it's a little too early to see where, whether that's an effective program.
When is the evaluation gonna be done?
Well, I think when we get our enrollment, we'll see if we get more students, then we can assume that it has some sort of positive effect. I think it's important that we continue to market our school district.
Sure.
Particularly with neighboring school districts doing the same thing.
Right.
So as much as we can do to attract students to our programs and the good things that we're doing here, I think it is, we need to do that.
I just want rigorous evaluation, because there are programs and monies that have been spent in the past without any evaluation of these contracts and programs.
I think, Tim, could I, I think, because we've talked about this as a group, is when we start something, before we, before it even happens, we have a plan to evaluate it.
Yes.
So we already know the milestones that we're gonna evaluate, we know how we're gonna evaluate, and we know what we're looking for before we even start a program.
Yes.
I know this has already been started and stuff, I think that's what Tim's trying to say, is like, the marketing, we definitely need it, and we know that all the school districts, they have a declining enrollment for whatever, you know, all the other reasons. But next, maybe next cycle of marketing, we focus on a plan and a way to evaluate it. And it's like an actual plan that we have.
Well, and I think Matt Marshall had mentioned the last, when he spoke to us last month, that they were gonna actually start asking the questions of, why are you leaving? Where are you going? Why did you come here? How did you hear about it? What's drawing you here? I think if we start getting it, and that's gonna take a couple of years, I mean, it's not something you're gonna get. And I think the August numbers, we look at the end, because there's some parents who are still on vacation, and you might not have those rumps in the seat the first week, a week and a half of school. So ten-day snapshot's great, but I look forward to what we see at the end of September and August, and even September, to see if we've made a difference in marketing.
Yes, I agree.
We won't know.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Twelve C, public hearing on the twenty, nope, I skipped one, twelve B. Sorry about that, Julie.
Give me a heart attack on that one.
We already approved that, so, public hearing on the preliminary local control accountability plan. LCAP, twenty seventeen through twenty twenty. Oh, open the hearing. Thank you. Seeing no input, I will close the hearing. So, questions or discussion? Anybody?
I'll just let you know, Robert and I are spending lots of quality time together.
Yeah, we do that.
Yes, we'll be bringing that to you at our next meeting, or the next regular board meeting on June twenty-fifth for approval.
Right. So one of the questions that, you know, that Steve Harrington asked me today when I was relating our superintendent, you know, search and things, he asked me, are these two documents gonna be completed? And I said, yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, so I said, we're well on track for those, so we're good. Okay? May I have a motion to accept the preliminary local control accountability plan for LCAP for twenty seventeen through twenty twenty?
So moved.
Okay, have a second?
I think this is just a public hearing.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is...
But it says action on here, though.
I think the action was just to hold the meeting.
Just to hold the thing, so there's no vote action?
Nope. You vote, you guys will vote on the twenty-fifth.
So when you put action on there, tell me, do we vote or not vote? Anyway, all right. So we will do a public hearing on the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty preliminary budget, so I will open that hearing. Seeing input, seeing none. I will close that hearing, so questions or discussion?
So we have the, this is preliminary, still pretty rough numbers here. There's still lots of areas that we're continuing to work on. I wanted to get something in front of you, but wouldn't hang my hat on any of the big numbers, the bottom line numbers right now. Particularly special ed, we still have a lot of work to do that, including staffing. Where we're gonna line up with that, we have some moving pieces on. As you know, we had a lot, unable to fill a lot of those positions, so we had a lot of contracts. And we're trying to evaluate now, which we need to move those positions back up and if they're warranted, and try to start hiring for those, but with contracts, you need to go away, that's just one example of that. I did want to point out to the board a couple of things in here. We are continuing to project and use flat enrollment, which will not be updated until first interim, the next official time, but we will know that information a little bit earlier on that. We know that there's some things, though, that are already above what we were projecting. That has to do with workers' comp, so our rates did increase slightly from what we were using in our projections. The health went up higher than what we had anticipated. It was, we were budgeting at a three percent. It came out at a blended rate of four point four three percent. So it's a little bit higher. But in comparison, one of the other options with our insurance JP, who we do not get our health's insurance through, their rates were up over seven, so there's a bright side. It's still gonna increase our budget from what we were anticipating on that. The other big thing to hit was an increase to property liability insurance, so that went up twenty-seven percent. We were, we were looking at a slight increase on that of two to three percent. Generally, it doesn't fluctuate a whole lot, but there's a lot, the industry right now is kind of in upheaval because of all of the molestation claims statewide. It impacts the whole market. And we get our excess insurance. In addition to that, the fires throughout the state have also had a negative impact on the rates. So we're feeling the effect of that on that.
But can you, can you change those percentages to dollar amounts for me?
Uh, that's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Hundred and twenty-seven thousand, okay.
Yes, yes, than what we were projecting on that.
You might have said that in here.
So that was not quite anticipated, but, so that's kind of the big things that we were looking at right now. Again, we're gonna continue, there's still a lot of work to be done over the next week and a half to get things finalized. So Ray Poole and I are working feverishly on the budget, working alongside with Julie to make sure that the LCAP and the budget are gonna line up.
That will be finalized, it has to be finalized till the twenty-fifth, right?
It will. We'll have something to present for adoption.
All right, thank you. So no action other than just a public hearing on that also? Okay, twelve D, public disclosure, ratification tentative agreement with RPCEA dated May thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen for the nurse, speech, language, pathologist salary schedule, and Article eighteen, special education.
Yeah, so this was one item that we did get a tentative agreement on. We're continuing to have negotiations with RIPSIA, but we felt this was an urgent need because of our difficulty in recruiting for school nurses and speech and language pathologists. So in order to make ourselves more competitive, we actually revised the salary schedule. And with, as with any, as within any negotiated salary, we have to do a public disclosure, collective bargaining agreement, which you have before you. This basically shows that we're able to afford the increase. It's kind of a staggered increase. We're gonna feel the more, the larger effect next year, and then as we move people around, and then it'll kind of level off, and the annual increases will be substantially less than that. Attached to this, because we are under qualified budget status, we had to send the public disclosure form to the county, and they sent, in turn, sent a response back that's attached, that basically their agreement with our projections. So what we're asking the board here is to approve the public disclosure statement and salary schedules attached.
So when you say the fiscal impact, nineteen point four two percent, the first year increase?
That's for the salaries only. Yes, that's correct.
And then three point five for the twenty twenty-one, and three point four four for twenty twenty-two?
Correct, and that's a percentage based on that small population.
Right. So, looks like we're gonna be going up... Am I reading this right, that it's gonna increase a little less than sixteen thousand the first year?
Uh, you're down in the multi-year?
I'm looking at A eight.
Uh, no, that is a...
I'm just trying to...
That's an average cost per employee.
Okay.
So what we're looking at is line five.
I was afraid you were gonna say that.
Yeah, I like the other number better myself.
Okay, so this has to do with eliminating some of the steps, kind of compressing it, making the steps larger, I guess, for lack of a better term?
We condensed the schedule at the top, and then we added steps at the bottom.
And I see where Mr. Harrington didn't agree with this, recognized this, but also was very cautious that anything we do going forward is gonna have to be met with additional cuts.
Yeah, so this is being based off of our third interim report. That's the latest public document. And so right now, the county is rightly being very cautious on our budget. And I would not expect anything less than a statement like that in there.
So it looks like that we're going to have in twenty twenty-one, we're gonna be deficit spending a little less than thirty thousand, as the snapshot looks now?
Yeah, again, that's third interim, so...
So their concern is keeping sufficient cash reserves, monitoring declining enrollment, implementing the fiscal recovery plan, and capturing necessary expenditure reductions for nineteen twenty in order to avoid remaining unqualified or moving to negative?
Correct.
Okay, so basically, anywhere we increase in salary negotiations, we're gonna have to take a look at cutting something else?
Well, not necessarily. I think what our goal is, and you'll see more as we move through the budget process, again, the third interim in our fiscal recovery plan was to kind of right the ship. And now we're gonna have to kind of monitor as we go along. And even, even though you may be seeing a budget that has some slight deficit spending, it's something we're just gonna need to manage over time. And I wouldn't be necessarily alarmed by a budget that's showing some slight deficit. A one point five million dollar budget deficit, that's alarming.
Yeah. So we've got to keep an eye on enrollment versus deficit spending, anything like that, all the time?
That's part of my job, yeah.
Okay.
We're constantly monitoring the budget and keeping us, making sure that we're making good decisions with our dollars, you know, and monitoring the things that are out of our control, like the state budget and that type of thing.
Okay.
Okay, so, twelve D, other questions? If not, we need a motion to accept this. This is not a resolution, so we're gonna vote on this, right? So I need a motion to accept the public disclosure, ratification, tentative agreement with RPCEA dated May thirteenth, two thousand and nineteenth, with the nurse, speech, language, pathologist salary schedule, and Article eighteen of special education.
So moved?
Okay, may I have a second?
All a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Twelve E, I asked Tony to put this on the agenda just for explanation. California School Board Association, we pay for services and provided, so if there's questions that... So they provide us with a number of services, and in turn, we pay fees for that.
Correct. It's a membership which comes with certain...
Right.
Certain benefits that have been added.
Right.
This does say that we've not historically joined the ELA portion. Is there a reason why we're doing it this year?
I believe a copy that I had saw had that struck out, and I'm not, the two thousand eight hundred and three dollars was struck out.
Oh, so it's, this is changed?
Yeah, I believe that's the copy that I saw, but if the board wants to entertain that, then you can add that on there.
No, we should save the money.
Okay.
In my opinion.
All right, so the twenty-eight oh three is not included in that, or it is included? Which one, which item?
The twenty-eight oh three, Robert said he saw a document, it was struck out, so that would be a no.
So are, so, someone want to make a motion for acceptance of their services for eleven thousand, two hundred and ten dollars, then?
I will make a motion to accept this, eleven thousand, two hundred and ten dollars minus the two thousand eight hundred and three dollars. But that looks like there's another bill for another sixty-three thirty for maintenance and gamut online.
Yeah, there's more.
And some of the gamut online is like seven to eight years out of date, so we're gonna be needing this.
Right, and we use that also as a source of, as we're looking at our policies to see if they're in line individually?
I use it several times a week.
So, there you go. Okay, so you made the motion?
I made a motion.
Okay, a second?
All a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five zero. Twelve F, acceptance of gifts and donations to the schools. Flipping back and forth here, page seventy. One more page over, I got it. Two donations, one to Thomas Page Academy for transportation to Safari West from Richard and Catherine Gingras, if I pronounce that right, and to Technology High School for monetary donation from the Boering family. So, thank you to them. So may I have a motion to accept the donations for four thousand, three hundred and nine dollars this month?
I'll make a motion to accept donations.
Okay, a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero, or no one opposed? So, reports, board member reports and future agenda items. So let's just go across this way. So Jennifer?
I enjoyed the end of the school year. Got to go to Tech High's award night. Attended Tech High's graduation. Got to watch my son graduate from high school and give him his diploma. That was very exciting. It was a very good night. Felt like all this weight was lifted off my shoulders. And of course, attend Rancho Catanas graduation, and I think it was a record, fifty-nine minutes.
It was fast.
I had friends there from other schools that were at Rancho's, and then went to theirs the week after, and they're like, oh my gosh, I wish ours was more like Rancho's was, so it was pretty funny. Yep, glad to be done with the school year. And thank you to everyone for everything you do, and I hope everybody enjoys their summer and their break. I think we all need it.
Chip?
I attended the graduation at Rancho and Tech High in Credo, and I had the flu at the last regular board meeting, and I missed the opportunity to thank Rachel Allen, the special education director. We had many meetings and went and visited several schools. And I also want to thank community members and special education former teachers in this district, Andy McHattan and Janet Lowry for going with us to visit the schools and talk to teachers and staff about the special education program. So I think Rachel did an excellent job creating collaboration among about twenty-five staff, community members, administrators, and others, board members, and creating a real sense of openness and transparency in the program and coming up with a lot of recommendations for improvements that she's moving ahead on. And so I just am immensely grateful to Rachel for her hard work. And then I also wanted to mention, I was on a conference call about the apprenticeship program. Joe, is it MC three and TIP? Those are the acronyms?
Yeah.
And I really want to urge the board to take this seriously, because there's been tremendous... because there's been tremendous success at other districts around the state, including Vallejo nearby, and they had their superintendent on the call with a city council member and a board member, and they're moving ahead really quickly on this. The value of this, and Joe can attest to this, is that we're not only giving students graduating from high school the opportunity to go on to college, to go on into service in the military, but to go into the building trades. And, and you can make, according to Jack Buckhorn, $100,000 a year after five years. And there's a lot of job security, there's, they can afford to live in Sonoma County. And so we need to put this on the agenda as soon as possible, hopefully in August, so that we can move ahead. Jack Buckhorn is, what's Frank's last name, Joe?
I don't know Frank, but he's the, he's like the training director for plumbers, and I don't remember his last name.
And, and.
We're.
Frank Grayden, yes.
Yeah, and, and so what would happen is, one or two instructors would work with our teachers in training them to be ready to go into the apprenticeship program upon graduation. And it would require a minimal amount of expense from our district and give a tremendous opportunity to students who wanted to go into the trade. So I hope that could be put on the agenda for August, so we can move on this, because the state has monies to help supplement this, and Jack is meeting with Tony Thurman and getting the monies. And then if we can match a small amount, we can just give this tremendous opportunity to the students who want to go into building trades. Thank you.
Thank you. So, going along, graduations were lots of fun. The Tech High grad night, or not grad, awards night was fun. I enjoyed one student's speech about taking risks and talking about his father doing free diving and relating to the education. So, as, as the other speeches at graduation, but that one kind of, it kind of sunk in, I think. Different ones have different meanings, so. Tech High's graduation was great, high school, the ranch was quick. Some of those kids went right by and didn't even shake your hand, but we did it, got it done in 59 minutes, so I'm not complaining. Traditionally, I worked project grad again all night, so I did not do the setup this year like we've done, but, you know, it's always a draw, we need more volunteers. So thank you for everyone that put that together and worked hard for that, and those people that volunteered that night. So with that, I will pass the baton to Carissa.
Rancho graduation was a lot of fun. I haven't been since my kids graduated a long time ago, and it was really fast. And the only other thing I have is I want to, the 3,000 series issue put back on the agenda on Gamut, it's empty. There's one line on there about how we do vehicle maintenance, and that's it. There's nothing else, and it's really important, that's an important financial series, so.
That's all.
Okay. Joe?
I also went to both high school graduations, they're pretty cool. And it's different to watch, you know, people, you don't, I don't really know any of the kids, but it's like seeing everyone super excited, and it's kind of an emotional thing, like, you know, when you graduate, I feel like you don't really understand what's going on, you're just, you're there, but then when you look, you're like, man, these guys have everything, like, makes you kind of reflect. And then my kids, they'll be graduating, and my oldest is 10, but, you know, I feel like tomorrow he'll be graduating, so.
No blink.
Yeah. And then I, they had the Gold Rush Day at my kids' school, Hawn, and I got to spend a lot of time talking to Ms. Carney, because I was working in the area. I don't know, I, my experience, elementary experiences with Hawn, and obviously I'm biased, but it just makes me feel really good to be a part of the community, because every single parent was super friendly and warm, and the teachers were the same, like extremely. And it makes me proud and happy that my kids get to go to a school like that, so. You know, it's super fun, and also like Ms. Carney was talking about the, like the history of just that Gold Rush Day and how it came to what it was, and it's kind of cool that we have teachers and staff that have been here in the community so long that, that the tradition kind of grows, and the community kind of grows around it, and everything like that. And that's it.
Super. With that, I think we can adjourn the meeting. Thank you.